Okay, so let me call our meeting together tonight. It's March 19. The hour is 7:00 PM. We're in Town Hall. Let me ask at the outset of our meeting of the Select Board that all present, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a public hearing leading off here tonight scheduled for 7:00 PM. It is a jointly owned pole petition. The location is 875 East Street. I'm going to read the legal notice and then we'll get into the particulars of this particular request. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March 19, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall, 1009 Main Street, Tewksbury, Mass. 01876 on the petition of National Grid, who is proposing to relocate pole 76 and push brace pole 76-89 approximately 18 feet westerly in order to accommodate electric service upgrade at 875 East Street, Tewksbury, Massachusetts. The customer is requesting to remove the existing private property pole line and go underground. If you have any questions regarding this permit request, please contact Joe Luntiel at National Grid. My colleagues should have a list of abutters that were notified of this hearing. There are three on the town's abutters list. And then we, of course, have the actual petition as filed by National Grid dated February 26, 2024. So let me welcome you, sir. And I know it's Dave, and I didn't quite catch the last name. So if you can just remind us for the purposes of our minutes, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, my name is Dave Boucher.
Thank you.
Senior designer from National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Andover.
Thank you and welcome. Thanks for coming in. So we have this schematic, and obviously many of us have sat through these discussions in the past, but just for the purposes of the public and educating people on exactly what's going on here, can you just give us a brief description?
Yes. The customer here, it's Market Basket. It's a very large property where they have several buildings and transformers, and it's all overhead construction. They've come up with a new plan with an upgrade for some of their buildings on the private property, nothing to do with the public way. But with that new design that they want for the property going underground to accommodate the entrance into the property, what we're asking from the town is a movement of one of the poles that's in the public way, approximately 18 feet, two poles, 18 feet westerly on East Street, the pole 76 and the push brace pole 76-89. That will enable us to go forward with the plan and accommodate the design that they want on the private property. In time, I'm not, we don't, I don't have a timeframe for you, but the old pole 76 and old pole 76-89 will be removed in the long run once all the new infrastructure is in place and we're ready to switch over from all overhead to underground where the new poles are located that we're asking for tonight. That's pretty much the job. If you had any questions, I could try to answer them.
Have the underground lines been installed yet or no, nothing?
On the private property, I don't know how far along they are with the construction. But they, they may have done some of the work already in places where they can do it and get the skeletal framework in there, you know.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any questions?
I have some.
Mr. Holland?
Mr. Chairman. Now, are there any sidewalks where you're putting these poles in? Are potential sidewalks, I should say?
I did not see that when I, when I looked at that. I did not notice whether there were sidewalks there, but it is the side of the road and it would be as far, let's just say, from the pavement as it is now. We're not going to go any closer to the road or further away because we need to keep the poles, you know, in a straight line as much as possible.
The reason I ask the question is if, if sidewalks that eventually go in, we want them further enough in so one of the plows that does the sidewalk can get through without having to go around the pole.
A lot of times towns will want that five feet you need for a handicap ramp or something, if that ever goes in or something like that. And that is right kind of near where the curb goes into the property too. So we, I can't say that the exact spot is going to be in the middle of a sidewalk or not, but we try to avoid it. We had an issue one time with, here in Tewksbury, I can remember one of the poles that we had put on Shawshank Road. We mentioned that a little earlier, that we, I believe we resolved it in the end. I did get involved with one of those poles that was near the, near the end of a line. I can remember that, but I can make a note here that makes sure that the pole is.
That'd be appreciated.
Yeah, not, at least off the sidewalk if possible, as far as possible, yeah.
There's no sidewalk.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Holland touched on the sidewalk piece. There are not sidewalks there now, but I wanted to ask the town manager two questions through you, Mr. Chairman. One is, has the DPW weighed in on this? And two is, are we aware of any plans or is this currently on our sidewalk plan?
I'd have to go back. The DPW should have weighed in on it, and if they, if they didn't, I can, you can make it subject to their review and approval, and I'd have to check the sidewalk plan to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then my, my second question, you did touch on when you were giving your explanation, and it's appreciated because we have had concerns about removal of old poles. Is there a ballpark of when you think this project may be completed?
I can't speculate on that. I mean, anything.
Are we saying maybe a year, six months, maybe two years, like ballpark?
I'm not, to be truthful, I'm not involved in the actual construction part, and I don't, I'm not there when we do these projects to, you know, witness how long it's going to take. As soon as possible is a good answer. I mean, it's kind of like the best thing. We don't want it there anymore than, and it also depends on, than the town does or anybody that's walking by. I mean, it's unsightly having double poles there or poles are so close. Plus, it's a hazard. I mean, anybody that ever went off the road, they, you know, if the pole's gone, they're not going to hit it. I don't know. But there's also the other utilities you've got to think about too. We are waiting for them to move off of the old pole before it gets removed. Not us, but the telephone company who removes the poles. So it will be once electric, cable TV, fiber optic, and it goes through the engine system that we have that, I believe your fire department has access to, you can, we can watch it. And then it goes to the telephone company and then it gets on their schedule to remove the old pole once they transfer to the new one too. So we are dependent upon those utilities, and that's why I kind of, I know that that's the fact. I'm not in the, you know, once again, I don't want to speculate, but as soon as possible is always the answer I can give you, but.
No, I can appreciate that. It's, again, we have had issues with old poles being left in the past, so that's why I did appreciate the comment of this is a request to introduce a new pole and remove the old pole. So that, that was a very important part for me and I'm sure others. So I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're actually going to ensure that the pole gets removed. I know that there are other owners to jointly own pole, but I guess I would have a follow-up question through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager. Do we have any sort of internal process that we can follow up on these poles and make sure they're being removed? Would that be a DPW item or how would we kind of get some assurance that this is being tracked to actually be removed?
We can watch it through the DPW and my office can make sure we follow up with our customer service rep for the area to make sure they're taken care of. So we'll watch it closely.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have a really good answer to follow up on that, what you're asking him. The fire department should have still, it's a program called NJUNS. All the towns and cities have it, and they can monitor the progression. Because of the fact that there used to be fire lines on the towns and cities, there's not too many anymore, but they still are out there, they still exist, and your fire department should have access to that. And if you don't, you can talk to the liaison that we have for your town. I'm not sure who it might be. Could be Shemad, it could be Elena, but if you know who that is, they may be able to, you know, direct you towards how to get that information from that NJUNS program and straighten things out and make communication better.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I don't want to beat this to death, though. You know, we're already talking about it, but every time these poles get moved, the first thing I'm asking about is the sidewalks and where they're being moved. I did go by the location. A number of, there's just grass out there, but it's a large property that's owned by Market Basket, and there's plenty of room out there. So there's plenty of property to move it and give the enough distance to have the location. I checked to see if the, the poles that are out there now, a couple of them are in that, if we installed a sidewalk, they'd be right in the middle of the path of it. So they weren't put where they should be, should have been put originally.
Right.
And there's so much room out there, the shame on them for not doing it because there's, I mean, it's, it looks like a field out there. That's how much land's out there. So you can put it out. Specifically, the new pole is going to go by the driveway. Our goal as a board has been to put sidewalks as many places as possible. I'm sure this is not on the top of the priority list because it's near a commercial development and there's not a lot of walking that goes up there, but we will get to it eventually. And my concern is you got trucks going in and out of there. If they're going to put it in, you have to make it ADA compliant, you have to have, and this pole is going right on the corner of where the driveway would be. Please make sure that it's put back as, and when we get around to it, we will be asking them to be moved. So we might as well do it now before we call you and say these poles need to be relocated. It's very difficult to relocate a pole with cable, electric, every, I understand everything that goes on, just to move one of these poles is probably going to take you two months to get all the utility companies to relocate. But if you would just do it the right way the first time, that would be beneficial to us.
Yeah, I, I follow what you're saying. There's a lot of sins of the past, if you will, where they were, some of the, a lot of the poles have been placed, but going forward, if we're going to move a pole, put it in the right spot right, right away or the best spot that's further off the, where a potential sidewalk would be. I get that, yeah.
Verizon should know that Tewksbury is paying attention to this, and my board members brought it up. So anytime something, you bring in a drawing to us, you may want to bring that into consideration next time you're coming.
The sidewalks.
We are going to bring it up every single time, you know, so that would be helpful.
I'll let Joe, Joe, the engineer who designed this, let him know to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I want to ask if the one resident in the room has any comments on this particular matter. I see a head saying no, so thank you. All right, so with that, let me ask if there's a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
Okay, the motion for the records offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Kratman. Fortunately, we have everyone in the room tonight, so we'll do this on a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that's a unanimous five to zero for the purposes of our recording secretary. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the petition of National Grid.
Oh, I apologize.
To relocate pole 76 and push brace pole 76-89.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Are we going to add?
Yes.
The DPW?
Yes, friendly amendment, yeah, at the, pending the approval and consultation approval of the DPW.
Yep, my apologies.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. So again, that's approval subject to the DPW's review and approval. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
I'm so used to doing roll calls, you got me off my game. All right. Okay, any residents tonight that wish to speak? I don't see anyone who rises now, so we'll move to new business. That brings us to the acceptance of a donation to the Tewksbury Police Domestic Violence Fund. This was a $100 donation made by Jane and Jack Sullivan in memory of Gene Docray Carr to the fund that I just mentioned. And this fund is used to help victims of domestic violence in the need of a hotel room, clothes, toys for children, et cetera. And the fund is primarily made up of funds from the Mahoney Fund historically, so this would supplement the existing fund that is in existence. So could I ask for a motion to accept the $100 donation, and I assume we'll ask the town manager to send a letter of gratitude?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? That's a five to zero vote with the chair voting in the affirmative as well. Okay, that brings us to the town manager. And you want to touch on overall financial policy update?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have passed out an updated overall financial management policy that the board adopted some time ago. The reason for the update was just to make sure we're current in our approach to the town finances and what we're currently doing in regard to town finances. And this, the changes that you have tonight really focus mostly on other post-employment benefit obligations and how the town approaches funding of what is called our OPEB unfunded liability. So the first change isn't until page three. And what we did here, and this is, this was worked on by myself and the town accountant, and this, I should step back, this is something that our OPEB actuary, who does our valuation every couple of years, recommended we do to incorporate more information in our financial policy on how we're going to address our OPEB unfunded liability, because that's what our rating agencies want to see. So when Standard and Poor's reviews our bond rating, they want to see that we actually have a policy on how we're going to address the unfunded liability. So on number two on page three, the area that you see with the strike through, the reason why that's taken out, it was essentially moved to the end of the policy. We're not eliminating it from the policy. We moved it to the end and we reworded it to reflect what we're doing today in our finances. Number four was added to essentially say, after we go through all of our uses within this policy for free cash, the board may use some of the free cash and put it into the OPEB trust fund to help the OPEB liability. It's not a requirement, but it's just after you do all the things, if there's a free cash that you want to utilize, that's something we will look at. We haven't had that opportunity in the past because we've been using free cash to address capital projects, capital equipment, one-time expenditures, and building our stabilization fund. But you may get to the point, and we may get to the point that we feel we can use some of our free cash that's left over to help fund the OPEB liability. Moving further down to the next page, under K, we just changed the threshold at which we probably would borrow funds for, from $25,000 to $100,000. And even at $100,000, we're probably not going to borrow funds for, we'd be higher, but didn't want to tie anybody's hands, so definitely we would never borrow funds for $25,000 or less, but 100 was a good number to, to go with for now, based on how we looked at it. And we usually don't borrow funds for anything frankly less than a million dollars. We've always used our stabilization fund of free cash. Then the next area that was changed, this is where we added the new language in for OPEB. The strike through that you see was my original text, and then the town accountant updated it to what's below. And essentially, it just says that we fund our OPEB on a pay-as-you-go basis, which means each year we just fund it as we go. We don't, we're not funding it to the, to the required amount that the actuary would like to see because that's in the millions of dollars, and we're just not at that point. So we funded it as a, on a pay-as-you-go at a minimum of $650,000, which is what is in the budget. The water and sewer enterprise funds and the cable enterprise funds fund OPEB based on what the actuary recommends within the valuation each year, and that's what we've been doing. So they meet the obligation, which is good for the town. And then the funds are transferred into the OPEB post-employment benefits trust fund. And then the last item, which is subsection I, essentially says that, and this is something that was important when we talked to our actuary and it's something important for the rating agencies. They want to know that, what do you, how are you really going to fund this in the future? When are you going to fund it by? And when we pay off our retirement unfunded liability somewhere around 2035, that amount will be shifted over to pay for OPEB. And then by doing that, we should have OPEB unfunded liability addressed by 2055. So those of you who are here then will have the pleasure of seeing that paid off. We also state in this section that obviously we will use other funds, surplus funds to help pay down our OPEB liability, whether it's use of free cash in any surplus we may have at the end of the year in our town, in school, health insurance funds, as well as any budgetary surplus and overlay surplus that we have. So those are really the essence of the changes, and that's it.
Okay, thank you for that summary. Let me open it up to my colleagues if there are any questions. Anyone?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, through you to the manager.
Okay, Ms. Wellman.
Are you, do you want us to adopt this tonight? Do you want us to, I mean, I think it'd be good to have a little.
Whatever the board would like, you can think about it for a couple of weeks to the next board meeting, however you want to do it. I just wanted to get it, get it on the table one way or another.
Is this, is the language recommended by the actuarial firm, is this what they're looking for specifically to see? Because I still want that AAA bond rating.
I know, it's going to be tough, but the language that is in there for OPEB was pulled out of a policy they recommended.
Okay, all right. I wanted to have.
I didn't want to create a separate policy. I wanted it all in one encompassing policy, so I took the language from that policy and incorporated it here. The other language they had in the policy, we already had in our policy. This was just the area.
Are there any other recommendations that are non-OPEB related that we should consider amending on this policy list?
No, everything, this policy originally, when we did it, was reviewed by our audit firm, and it's been reviewed in the past by our financial advisors when we meet with Standard and Poor's. So no one's recommended any other changes except try to get more specific on.
When was the last time this was amended?
Probably within the last four or five years.
Okay. I note that under item I, vis a vis the stabilization fund, I'm wondering if it makes any sense at some point to revisit those target percentages as a percent of operating budget, just in, in light of the times that we live in. I know it's proportional, but I wonder if we should increase that to five to seven percent or something along those lines?
We can look at that. We can look at that and come back at the next meeting.
If you wouldn't mind seeing what the implications of that might be. These policies, I know, were grown out of a number of financial difficulties this town experienced many years ago prior to your arrival, Mr. Montori, and they have been essential guiding documents for the board over the years. And so staying on top of them, I think it's, in refreshing this language and making these changes is ideal, and I appreciate that effort. Thank you.
So let me just offer a comment, and I don't know what my colleagues intend to do. This is my last opportunity to vote on it, that I know for sure. So I would certainly want to at least express my wholehearted support for adoption of these changes, whether I have the privilege to do that tonight or I would urge my colleagues to do so at a near meeting. As Ms. Wellman noted, there was a time when we didn't have policies like this in place, and our town was in very difficult financial straits. The board, whether it includes the people at this table, our predecessor board members, saw fit to create a foundation, and this document is literally the foundation of our sound financial policies. And we've adhered to it through the town meeting process for many years now. If you look around and you read the newspapers and you watch the local news in the neighboring communities that are now experiencing significant financial stress, we are not. And knock on wood, hopefully that will continue, but in large part, it's because of the foundation that was built and these policies that have been adhered to. So I, I really want to stress that the town has enjoyed a run here of strong financial management and strong, a strong fiscal footing, and this is the foundation of it that, in my opinion, this board should not ignore. I think it would be enormously beneficial for Tewksbury if we could get to that AAA bond rating. Huge, would be a huge accomplishment. And in the meetings that I've sat in over the years with the bond rating agencies, the primary thing that they, are critical of our community and many others is the subject of OPEB obligations. So anything that we can do to bring clarity to our intention and document our plan on that is going to hopefully make them feel more comfortable. So I urge my colleagues to adopt those changes, whether it's tonight or another night, but I think this is strong financial work and it will benefit the community for years to come.
And Mr. Chairman, just to give some history, the original document was adopted in 2013. We revisit when the board updated all of their policies, if you remember that. It was updated in late 2018, so that's been the progression.
Okay, so if there's no other comments.
I just have a quick comment. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Chairman, and I, I always take your, your opinion very seriously, and I will continue to do that. But, you know, I have a couple of questions. It's not something, getting a policy change on the day of making a vote, I'm just not in favor of just doing that. It seems something that's, everything seems in line, but I do have a couple of questions with some of the changes that are labeled out here that I would like to talk with the town manager about, just to say, you know, it's, I see that the cable enterprise fund and a couple of other things are put in there that I would like to clarify before voting on, before we make a policy change. But this is something that, you know, I think all of us are in favor of, of trying to pay down that, but I think like, you know, if we're going to get something that's handed to us to vote on it the same day, I just would have liked to, to ask a few more questions to dig into it before voting on it.
Okay. So if there's no other discussion, Mr. Kratman, let me ask if you have a motion to offer to table the matter.
I got a motion to table about it to our, to our next meeting.
Second. I have a second on that? We do. So Mr. Kratman offers the motion, Mr. Holland offers the second. All those in favor of tabling the matter, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? We'll consider that a unanimous vote?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. And any questions you have, let me know, and I'll address them before the next meeting. The next item, that's, I wanted to just update the board on. The next item, that's, I wanted to just update the board on. We, as the board knows, we had gone out with a request for proposals for recreation programs and activities. Proposals were due towards the end of February. We received two interested parties. One was an organization called Chess Wizards, who are based out of Illinois with activities and staff in Massachusetts and as well as other states, and the Lowell YMCA. I'm going to just talk about, both were very, very good proposals, very different. And I want to just talk about Chess Wizards first because that's probably the easiest to discuss and the one we're going to, is easiest to move forward with. Chess Wizards is a group that essentially teaches chess to young children ages five to 12, I believe. And they have programs in towns, many towns in Massachusetts. They're an hour long and they run for eight weeks, eight to 10 week sessions. There's a fee to go to their classes or their programs, it's somewhere between $21 and $26 a session or an hour, again, for eight to 10 weeks. They are not a group that would run multiple activities, they do one very specific thing. And it's an enrichment program where they teach chess and children play each other from various ages. And we think it'd be a good program to offer the residents. It's something that the library, through Diane Giaruso and the library director, Robert Hayes, are working on with the children's librarian to bring them in starting sometime in, at the end of May or the end of April, and to run for eight weeks and see how they do. It'd be just like any other program we offer through the library or through the town. The senior center director, Jan Canol, is interested in having them come to the senior center, whether it's offering chess to children there to intermingle with the seniors or to do something with the seniors. So it's just a unique program for people who want to learn chess. And so that was something that we'd like to get going on and they're excited about doing something in town. And we actually worked on a schedule, if it moves forward, that they would even do a six-week chess camp in the summer, where kids can go five days a week, a few hours a day, and it's learning to play chess and tournaments and just again, an enrichment program through chess. So myself, the assistant town manager, town clerk, town planner and library director all met them and thought it was a great opportunity to offer the residents and the community. So that was one area. Then we met with YMCA at Lowell, who we've met with in the past. They were interested in coming into the town a few years back when the alphabet was brought in by the schools for early, for morning and afternoon care, as well as summer programs. They've been interested in expanding their operations. So they came in and they provided a good program that they would like to bring to town if there's interest. And what they would do is they would lease the recreation building and they would offer programs out of the recreation building and down at Livingston Street. They would like to, if all goes well and everyone's comfortable, move forward sometime in April, late April, or later, depending on how the board feels or when we're comfortable. Throughout the summer and then they probably really get going in the fall because that would start to build upon their early programs. And what they would do is they would run programs such as Lego classes or Lego programs for an hour. They would run a Pokemon and Magic program for an hour, one day during the week, dance classes, art classes, soccer skills classes, flag football skill programs, not to compete with youth sports, but just as skill programs for kids who don't want to maybe get into a more competitive, but would do this. And they have some other things that they would offer, but initially they would start with something like this. But they're not going to just target, their plan is not to just target children, they want to target adults too. And they would offer classes down at the recreation center. That would be stuff like beginner yoga, cardio, kick-it fusion, chair pose, core and more type classes, balance classes, more advanced yoga, zumba, low-impact cardio. So they would run those programs both during the day and possibly in the evening. So they're not just going to come in and run activities for children, they want to do it for adults also. And they have the staff to do it, similar to the Chess Wizards, they would do everything. They would sign up the people, they would organize it, they would get corpsies on everybody. We would just be the, here's the location, run the operation. So it seems like it would be a good fit. It could start off with, you know, some of these programs, start off small, get input on one of the programs we'd like to see, the way they would run it, they would have advanced, sign up for Tewksbury residents. And then if the class is in full, they would open it up to members of the Y, not to the , they're just the people who are in the Y. Because similar to what we do with programs, possibly at the senior center, what other towns do with their recreation, they don't always fill it with residents of the community, they open it up to the surrounding areas. So this was something that they brought forward. We thought it was a great opportunity to provide programs and activities and, you know, just, you know, we'd like to see it get going in the future, just want to see what the board wants to do for next steps.
Is it budget neutral, Mr. Montori?
If anything, it's probably going to generate some revenue because they would probably, they would lease the building as well as, and this is from both organizations, they would do some type of cost share, which, you know, I would talk to them about it, it may be something that we say, you know, reduce the rate of the cost of the program. You know, we're not really looking to make the money, we're looking to offer the programs at a reasonable rate for the residents.
Okay.
But it's not costing us anything.
Very good. Other questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my first question, first of all, both programs sound like great additions, but the one thing that really jumped out at me was leasing of the teen center building. And, I mean, that building has other uses such as voting, as well as the parking lot. So I think that would be a tough needle to thread with the parking situation and then the impact potentially on voting, is my first.
So they know about the voting, they know that has to be worked around, they know that we have July 4th, 3rd activities that they actually were excited about when we talked about it, and they know we have a community market. So they would work around all of the schedules we have.
Perfect.
And they know it's a very active place on Saturdays and in the evening for youth sports.
Okay. Well, that actually answered two of the questions and the chair asked my other question about cost neutrality. So I guess my final question is, have they, have you informed them of the potential to lease the Trahan site? Because that is a small building.
They've walked, they actually have been through both buildings in the past and they seem to, I don't want to say they're going to do anything with either site, but the North Street School seemed to, of the two schools, appear to be of more interest, but they also understand it's just a big undertaking.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Yes, I got a couple.
Mr. Kratman, go ahead.
Yep. So this sounds like a great addition, but I've been in that building a number of times. It needs some renovations. The bathrooms are in pretty rough shape. I know Vinnie has been down there and he spent the last month guttering the place out, taking all the things that weren't used for many, many years that were inside that building. The tables are gone, the chairs are gone, all the old stuff that's in there. Do we have funds to purchase new stuff or would they be supplying these type of things?
So we did go in and clean the place out of all the stuff that was there. And we painted it, we painted, Vinnie had it painted and the ceiling tiles were placed. We have a funding request coming forward at town meeting for new windows and new doors and new flooring. We know we need to address the bathroom, the restrooms, so we're going to work to address those within the budget. And then, once we find out that this is going to move, we'll see what type of new, what type of items they need. And we're going to need to purchase, we're going to need to purchase tables anyways because we got rid of the old ones and whether it's voting or Fourth of July or whatever, those tables are needed. So we're going to purchase those things as we, as we get closer to, you know, towards the end of this fiscal year and get all that done.
That's great.
And then whatever they need, they'll provide their own supplies and they're going to walk through the site tomorrow again with the facilities manager and just give us an idea of what they want. The long-term, not long-term, but the next move would be to look at that kitchen area, which we've removed everything out of, to see if we want to get that active again as a kitchen area. They would like to conduct cooking classes at the facility. So we're going to look at all of that. But you're right, we need to go back and replace some of the items we got rid of with newer.
Well, you mentioned April, that just seems awfully quick for them to be able to do that. That's all my concern was.
Yeah, they, both groups seem to want to get going. They were hoping for April vacation, but sometime in April, so they could at least see how things would get going before the summer and then ramp up for summer programs too. I mentioned that I wasn't sure what the timeframe would be depending on tonight's meeting. It would be tight for them to get things going, but they said if they thought there was a positive movement, you know, if you want them to come in on the next meeting, they'd be glad to come in. But if they had an indication that things were looking good, they could stop the wheels in motion and come in and see the board and then go from there.
That was going to be my next thing is that, you know, I know there's a very active group that's like asking for additional recreation in this community. And I would like to see the group come in, I mean, put in a presentation. I mean, we have a number of questions, but it seems like they have been very active spending time talking about this. So if we had them come in, they could ask those additional questions of what was going on. The other point that I've, we've been discussing internally about is the use of, we have porta parties down there. I don't know how many times they get calls during the summertime, it's so busy down there. It's hot and we have these things down there. If we get additional revenue, I would love to install additional bathrooms, actual real bathrooms down there that, you know, we get seniors that are bringing their grandchildren to the park, there's no place to wash your hands down there. The bathrooms are locked most of the time until, we have to find a way to make those available for the public. And if we get additional revenue, I'd like to see if we could take that fenced area just around the back. There's nothing on that pad. There used to be soda machines and other things. You can gutter that out and add additional bathrooms down there where people can actually wash their hands clean. I mean, just after what we've gone through, it would be a nice, be able to, so many little kids down there, you can't wash your hands with hand sanitizer, you know?
We can definitely look at that as a future project.
Yeah, okay. This is going to generate revenue, I'd just like to have the residents come in and ask additional questions if possible.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we'll get revenue, it won't be a large amount, but something like that, whatever improvements we want to make down there, we'll have the funding, whether it's CPA funding or...
I would like to look at what the cost is of what we're spending on porta parties. I know it's very expensive. And what the overall cost of making a one-time investment of installing actual bathrooms and I think they could offset each other if we actually got rid of it because porta parties cost a lot of money. And we're constantly down there emptying, so this would be something that could be beneficial.
I can get to that. We actually pulled that, we were looking at last year's expenses and getting ready for the new year with the youth groups and I have that cost.
We're asking people to use the thing, so I think creating a usable facilities, I think would be a big benefit and I'm sure everyone would appreciate it. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Holland? I just have a couple of questions. Have they done this in other communities similar to this?
I'm not sure. I don't, I haven't heard that they have. We might be the first that they're trying this out. I know they run a camp up in Dunstable every summer that is very popular and very successful. But as far as coming in and supplementing activities for another town, I don't know of any.
Yeah, and I think you answered my question a few minutes ago because I heard you say CPA. This is recreation, even though you're building a bathroom, it's still recreation.
Oh, yeah, that's what we can look at.
So it does qualify for that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My colleagues have asked a few of the questions I already had, so I appreciate that. In the programming offering, did they mention anything about music or theater?
Say that one more time.
In the program offerings that they had, did they include music or theater programs at all, to your knowledge?
They did discuss it.
Okay.
They did discuss it.
We have a call for that in the community, so it'd be great to see if they could include, you know, a theater camp or something, that would be huge, or music. You mentioned the cost share and I do think that there is something to be said for having that and doing revenue generation because we can use those revenues operationally to fund ideally a future recreation director, to help us coordinate across all of our properties and all of our facilities, not the care of the facilities, but the use piece of it and all of our ball fields and so forth. And we know that there's, you know, more need for that. So Mr. Kratman raised an issue for bathrooms in that area and that there's a call for that. What I think may be efficacious is if we were to pursue a master plan for the Livingston Street recreational fields and also include our ball fields on East Street. And then if there's opportunities for other ball fields, we know that there's a need. And so kind of wrapping that in and doing maybe a little bit bigger of a piece, not taking a long time to do that, but I do think there's a call for sanitary facilities at that down there and there may be in other places as well. So I think a master plan might be a good idea. And then finally, with the lease agreement, is the lease agreement going to be something that this board reviews and has to approve or is that something that you do?
No, the board review.
Okay.
If we're going to bring them in before the next meeting, I'll get it to the board over this weekend.
That'd be great. Some of the concerns I have, I think this, I'm all for this, I think this is great, I think the community will need it. I don't know that Greater Lowell Y has done this sort of program here, but I've seen this with other Ys in neighboring communities, offer sort of satellite programs. So it's something that the organization itself is capable of doing and it's long history of doing. With the lease of that facility, I'm glad that they have communicated, they'll work around some of our existing uses that we have and that this community relies on and enjoys. And I'm just a little bit curious as to sort of what are the entanglements with that? So just as a protective piece, but I think this is great and I really appreciate you bringing these forward. I think Chess Wizards would be also a really nice, a really nice thing for a lot of kids in town. So thank you so much.
Okay. I'll just, I'll be brief, but just two comments, and this is more for people not in the room, but hopefully paying attention, because I too totally support the effort and I'd encourage you to make it happen as quickly as you can because we do know there's a need and there's a desire in the community. And what I want to say to those who might be watching and have some passion about this topic is it's important that we crawl before we walk, right? We can't bite off more than we can chew. We're heading into headwinds here with, from a budgetary perspective. The worst thing we could do is be over aggressive and then a year or two out, have to start to cut things. So outsourcing makes a lot of sense and having people who are focused on the programs that you described execute them without having us have a learning curve is also a benefit to our community. So I think the crawl before you walk approach is very strong. And then, not to be the skunk at the picnic, but this board, of all the boards in town, has a very significant responsibility to look out for the exposures that the town potentially takes on. And this is an area where there's huge liability risk. So again, having somebody else who has insurance in place, who we can hold responsible... So again, having somebody else who has insurance in place, who we can hold responsible for anything that goes wrong, is, in my opinion, good stewardship for the community. And that can be lost on residents who are looking for services. But we have to provide those services, in my opinion at least, in a way that's responsible to protect the entire community. And I, I know that if we do a lease, we'll have proper protections. I also know that these organizations have substantial insurance in place to protect in the event that something untoward occurs. So that, in my mind, is, you know, sleep insurance as a select board member, right? We have the comfort of knowing that, we have protection, we can chase somebody else if something goes wrong. And it's the last thing that I wish I had to talk about, but we live in a world that's very litigious and we live in a world where almost every day you see horrible stories in the news. And we don't need that to happen here. Hopefully it won't. But we want to make sure we have business partners that we can hold their feet to the fire. So I'll leave, I'll leave it at that for those two comments. So I gather the consensus sounds like we want to continue the discussion, you want to have some further presentation. And if that's the case, we'll just set this matter aside, you'll put it on a future agenda.
Yeah, I'll put it on the next agenda and I'll tell them they should prepare to, you know, at least start thinking about getting going. So if things work, go out, go well on the ninth, then they can hit the ground running on the 10th.
Okay.
I'll get, I'll get information. I'll have town council put together a lease, I'll get that to the board to look at before the 10th and we'll go from there.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question, so I completely agree on making sure we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed and getting the outreach for the residents, but the one that chess wizards does not require a lease, is that something we can continue?
I think chess wizards could just be a program that's often like any other program I've offered to, yeah, that's an easy one.
Yeah, I know you had mentioned April, so I wanted to make sure that we're not hobbling them if we don't need to. Thank you.
No, they'll, they'll definitely get them going and see what interest there is. They, they need, I think they said if they get 12 kids in a class, that works for them.
First. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to town council invoices.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two town council invoices, one from February 1st through February 15th in the amount of $3,102.50. I'd recommend approval.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, that's five to zero in the affirmative.
Second invoice is from February 16th through February 29th in the amount of $3,187.50 and I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, that's five to zero in the affirmative. Anything else, Mr. Montari?
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, before we move off of the town manager, I just want to ask something to him. You brought up a good point about news stories and other things that have been happening. And I recently saw a news story about Tewksbury State Hospital, about the problems they're having up there, employees were voicing concerns about safety. The kids are going to be getting up for April vacation very soon. We're telling, we're telling families to bring their families to this location. We have the senior center that's right there. We've had a number of instances that have recently in our community of, you know, somebody getting off the property and stabbing somebody, somebody threatening to kill themselves and other things that have been happening. And it seems like they're overburdened and they don't have enough security. I know our police and fire have made efforts to work with them, but it doesn't seem to be enough. And prior to us getting to the summer season, I would like to see if you could get somebody from Tewksbury State Hospital to come up and see what measures they're putting in place before our kids get out for the summer. The seniors are going to be going down using the senior center, the lot, it's, it's, the whole facility is cornered by where we send our, the seniors are not kids. It's, you know, one entrance is at the library, one entrance is at the senior center, the other one's at the fields. That's scary. And if they're, and if they're overburdened with all these people and they don't have enough security up there, I'd like to get some answers of what the plan is.
Okay. We'll reach out to the director and see if we can get someone in for the next meeting.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Meeting, then one meeting after that. Okay, moving on, we have two sets of minutes to approve, Mr. Holland?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for October 7th, 2023.
So moved.
Do we have a second on that?
Seventeenth.
All right. So we have a motion offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Krabman. Approval of the October 17 meeting minutes, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a unanimous five to zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 23rd, 2024.
We'll second that.
Okay, so the motion's offered by Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Krabman again. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, that's five to zero again. All right, that brings us to board member reports. Mr. Krabman, do you have anything tonight?
My meetings are later on in the month, so I don't have anything to report at this meeting.
Mr. Mackey?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wellman?
Just one thing, I just want to note for the community that there is a town election on April 6th. I want to state that I have great respect for all candidates that put their names forward to participate in this contest to serve our community. And service in elected office isn't easy nor glamorous, is hard work and requires a measured temperament and thoughtful empathetic leadership. Not everyone's cut out for it. It is a privilege to serve our community and I wish all the candidates well and look forward to serving with them in the next year. And I wish to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your service to this board over 17 years, 20 years?
Fifteen on this board.
Fifteen on this board and as town moderator and on the finance committee and numerous committees. Your leadership and your commitment to our community has been exceptional and it's been a privilege to serve with you. Thank you.
Appreciate the kind words. Mr. Holland?
I want to reiterate what Ms. Wellman said about your service, you know, maybe you could start mowing the lawn, you'd have a third career, you know, finance committee, you know? The other thing I want to mention is although it came up short, the hockey team, you know, I think they deserve a shout out because it takes a lot to get to that game, you know? And finally, I want to thank Mr. Mackey and Ms. Wellman in the Andover Board of Selectmen and the Drakehead Board of His List and that preambulation thing we went to. We all get drunk on, what was it, apple cider?
Yeah, non-alcoholic apple cider. Mr. Holland?
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so I'll, I'll be very brief. I just want to thank the community. I've had the privilege, I consider it a blessing, to sit at this table, as I said, for 15 years. When I started, the town was in financial difficulty, we had a lot of tough issues to wrestle with and I worked with 14 different board members and four here now tonight among those 14. And while I didn't always agree or they didn't always agree with me, we managed to move Tewksbury forward, in my opinion. And I know that we are in a better place today than we were when I first started the journey. I've met people that I would not have otherwise met, that are residents and fellow Tewksbury community members. I've learned an enormous amount about our community that I would not have learned had I not put my name on a ballot and been fortunate enough to be elected. So I am forever grateful for that experience. I encourage residents to get involved, get engaged. You don't have to run for elective office, serve your community in some way. And if you have the courage, and I underscore that word because it does take courage, if you have the courage to put your name on the ballot, I urge you to do that. Because in my opinion, there's nothing better than serving your community and helping to make things work. Local government, unlike the federal and state level, is where the rubber meets the road, right? What we deal with here has real impact on everyone's lives each day, whether it's approving a poll petition like we did earlier to start this meeting. It has an impact on a major employer in our community. It has an impact on the neighborhood that surrounds that employer where that location was, all the way through the things we discussed tonight, like recreation and services to young kids in our community, to the seniors that might potentially take advantage of some of those things that we, we mentioned. All of that is something that is beneficial to our neighbors and our families and friends that we live with at a local level. So it, it's an honor and a privilege and it's been nothing but a positive experience for me personally. So I am grateful to all of my colleagues, past and present. I'm grateful to the town manager, who I think is the best town manager in the region. And I'm grateful to the folks that saw fit to give me their votes time and time again. And lastly, our two more comments, I'm grateful to the employees of our, our town who time and time again step up to get things done. And sometimes they get overlooked or forgotten, but when the pipe breaks at 2:00 in the morning, they're the ones who show up. When you have a health problem at home, at, you know, 1:00 in the afternoon, the fire department and the ambulance are always there. And when something goes wrong and you need public safety in the form of a police officer, they always show up. So I want to thank those people across the board because we are fortunate to have a lot of really good and dedicated town employees. And lastly, I just want to thank my family and especially my wife, who sacrificed in ways that many people don't appreciate. I got to do something that I enjoy by coming here night after night and spend the time that we all spend in this capacity. But that requires you to be away from your family. So they sacrifice in a different way. And I'm grateful and enormously grateful, especially to my, to my wife for putting up with that for as long as she did. So I want to thank all of you for your kind words and support. I wish you all well. I'm really, really proud of what we all as a community accomplished over my tenure and I look forward to seeing a lot of good work in the future by future members of this board. So with that, I'll close my comments. We are going to move into executive session. And when we do that, we will have a discussion around collective bargaining. And when we exit executive session, we will be adjourning the open meeting immediately. So there'll be no further public activity taking place by the board this evening. So I'm going to wish everyone well and thank you all. And with that, I'll ask if there's a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussion of collective bargaining matters.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five to zero. Mr. Krabman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Holland?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We're now in executive session. Have a great evening and this next board meeting for my colleagues will be on April 9th, I believe, at 7:00 PM.